Tristan, you all set?
You're on air or not ready?
All right.
Yeah, all set. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, gotcha. Good afternoon, everybody. Call this meeting to order. At... All right.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Could you do the land acknowledgement first?
Oh, sorry. The Sika School Board acknowledges that our schools are located on the ancestral homelands of the Klinkit people who have lived in the Chica since time immemorial. We express our deepest respect and gratitude for our tenuous neighbors, Klinkit, for their enduring care and protection of Klinkit on it. Down, roll call, please.
Todd Geddler?
Here.
Danny Snyder?
Here.
Tristan Givon?
Here.
Melanie Borden is absent and excused. Meeting is core eight.
On item five. Approval of the proposed agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the proposed agenda, please?
I move to approve the proposed agenda as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Public comment on the proposed agenda? For board comment on the proposed agenda? Seeing none? Moving on, item six.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Since we have a member attending the Zoom, we do need a roll call vote on every motion. So I'll do a roll call vote for the approval of the proposed agenda. Todd Geddler?
Here.
Yes?
Yes.
Danny Snyder?
Yes.
Tristan Givon?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Dawn.
You're welcome.
Item six. Persons to be heard on and off the agenda. Persons to be heard. Persons to be heard is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board about topics on the agenda and non-agenda topics. From non-agenda items to board deliberation, no board deliberation or action will occur in response. Questions for clarification may be posed to board members. The board may choose to refer items to the superintendent or designate for further action. The standard time for comments will be three minutes unless otherwise stated by the board president with consent of the board. A timer is used with the sound will indicate when time expires. All comments must be respectful and charges and complaints against specific employees are not permitted per Alaska State statute. Members of the public are referred to Board Policies 1312, 1312.1, 1312.2, 1312.3, and associated administrative regulations as well as Board Law 9323A for information about how to lodge complaints. Speakers are also asked to please state their full name for the record prior to speaking. Also, I'd like to add, I'd like to take an opportunity to clarify some of these false information that have been circulating online about student activity funding. There's been posts on, there's been some posts on social media claiming that the district school board is not funding and has cut student activity funding for the 2023-24 school year. That information is false. Student activity funding for next year, including the money appropriated by the Assembly, is funded for next year. That funding includes $244,718 at the Sika School District, Sika High School, and $2,562 at Botched Middle School for student activities in the 2024 fiscal year budget revision 1.1. $132,000 funding from the Assembly and up to $300,000 funding from the Assembly for Proposition 1 funding. Thank you. Okay, well, with that, are there anybody, any persons to be heard?
Kevin Mosher, a member of the Assembly. I thank you for that clarification. I just found out yesterday about these things and what was going on. Didn't really have a chance to look too deep into it, but I also wanted to take this opportunity just to remind the board, the current board, about Prop 1. I remember I want to text because I was talking to a friend and he pointed out that the current board is not, that's in place now, it was not in place at the time of past, so it looks like we're okay, but just wanted to remind the current board and administration that the intent of the Prop 1 tax from marijuana would go to student activities to not to, in addition to, not to replace funding, so if you ever have any questions, please give me a call or text me, or my phone number is on the city website. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeremy Strong and I am a teacher at Sika High School and a coach for both cross-country and track and field. My understanding of kind of what has happened this last year is that the discrepancy is not with the 2023-2024 fiscal year or that school year, but the past school year that just happened, where every year we're allocated a certain amount of money that we use to budget, create our budgets, and this last year, the money that we were allocated was not given to us, which puts us at a shortfall for budgeting items like equipment or having to, just to be able to plan for future things, and I'm not exactly sure how we got there. I'm pretty frustrated that I have to be here on a Thursday at noon to advocate for school activities and being funded properly, and I don't know if it's, it seems to me like it's a lack of transparency and accountability of leadership. And anyways, I'm frustrated and I know that a handful of other people are also frustrated that we've not received that money yet, and I don't know if it's too late or what the deal is, but anyways, thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. I'm here. Made some comments last week, I just wanted to echo those. For me, I think I just would say I'm overall disappointed and a little bit confused as to how we got to this place. If we go through the modern history of activities, I think if you go back to the time of Laus Verro, because I don't have the contacts for Jim Guinness, but every activities director has always counted on the $132,000 coming through for funding for activities, and I can't think of a year in the history of our district of we didn't fund activities. So FY23 is going to stand alone as the only year in the history of our district, at least in the last 30 or 40 years, where we don't directly deposit support into the accounts of our activity teams and groups. And that's a shame. I know that there was a change in the way that money was structured, and so maybe that led to some confusion, but in the past, that money's been deposited in October after count date and then spent on that year's students. And for whatever reason, that money didn't get there this year. There was promises made from the district office of it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, and it never showed up, and then unfortunately, the board never had the chance to have that in the budget proposed to them. And then you guys built your budget for FY24 without the idea that we still had that money. And here we are with only having vetoed half the money and we're in a really hard place to be able to go back and make that right. So it's disappointing to me that we sit in this situation as a result of kind of those decisions. I hope that there's a way somehow, whether it's today, that you can do a revision to the FY23 budget, or if you can find a way in the FY24 budget to deal with Back Bay. I think we could probably find a compromise in front of common ground, but these teams do need support every year. Can they survive? Probably. Does Andrew Haynes have $25,000 of backlog maintenance that he needs to do for instruments to make his program run? Yes. Does every team have $5,000 to $10,000 of uniform costs that they haven't paid for that they need to? Yes. Can they survive and make it go? Of course they can, but you know, it's a promise made by this district every year to fund these teams, and to me, at this point, it's really about trust. I feel like it's going to put us in a bad position with the City Assembly with the way they can trust us with this Prop 1 money going forward, and it really puts us in a bad spot with our coaches, who to me are really just glorified volunteers. We talk over and over about social emotional learning in this district and the value we place on it. They are on the front lines of leading that charge. They are our best social emotional learning educators in this district. And the one promise they get from us is a little bit of money that pays for a quarter of their season, and we need to find a way to make it right for them. So I encourage the board to try to find creative ways to, whether it be today or in the future, to make that right for the last year. Thank you.
Hello. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. I want to, my name is Catherine Prushen. I'm a resident of this community and I have children in the school district. And first, I want to say thanks. I know all of this is volunteer, and I really appreciate you guys stepping up and being willing to take on these leadership duties. I just want to say I'm a huge advocate and supporter of sports and activities for our programs. I think it's really what makes our kids vibrant and diverse and outstanding in many ways. And I think one thing I could ask of you guys is what's already been said today, but some transparency in the numbers so that everybody can see. I and others spend a lot of time fundraising for activities, and sometimes it's hard to tell what goes in, how it's parsed out differently in different groups, and I think increased transparency would be really helpful. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning. Ryan Myers, Sika High School and soon to be girls varsity basketball coach. So I would like to just echo the sentiments that already been said. I don't want them to feel like they're speaking alone. The only couple of things I would like to add is when I applied to be the girls varsity basketball coach, I've been coaching basketball for 20 years. I've coached around the world, and this is the only place where fundraising is a major part of that job. I've never had to fundraise to run a basketball program before, and I'm willing to do it. But in all honesty, it is far and away the part of the job I am least interested in. I want to be there for the kids. I want to support activities. That's where my passion is. Fundraising is a distraction from that for me. I'm willing to do it, but having a shortfall means that going into the next year, I've got to try to make decisions like, how much more fundraising do I need to do to make up for that potentially? Or do we need to raise fees to cover shortfalls? And I don't want to have to do that. I don't want to have to ask anyone else to do that, because to be honest, it kind of feels like trying to drop blood from a rock. I mean, the fundraising that all of our groups do, and they all do it, they're really pulling from the same people all the time, and we just need to, I feel like I need to respect that and maybe try not to go to that well too many times. And then secondly, I'd like to speak just as a parent, because as a parent of two high school kids, I can say that the amount of out-of-pocket expense that we incur is substantial. I mean, just from the school's perspective, I've sent nearly $4,000 to the school for my two boys to do activities, and that does not include the food that they have to eat when they go, or the shoes, or the ancillary costs. We're willing to do that because we think it's that valuable, but it's a big burden. And so if the activities that they're a part of are all having financial problems because they don't have that money that they thought they were going to have, then that is a cost eventually that's going to get passed on to me. And so support what everyone else said, and I'm sure this will get taken care of, but I just wanted to put that there. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Persons here?
Hi, my name's Hal Spackman. I'm just a community member, and I appreciate the fact that the board's going to fully fund the activities next year, or at least at the amounts that you said. I think my biggest question is, you know, I want, it seems like people haven't asked for an answer yet. Activities are six tenths of a percent of a $22 million budget, so it's a very small amount, and I know you've got a lot of other things to decide, but my first question is, was the $134,000 FY023 allocated to student activities in the approved budget?
We can clarify?
In the FY23 budget?
As a, Frank, can we clarify that?
Well, I guess as the president, one question, usually persons to be heard, usually it's just a matter to hear if there's not necessarily a response. I can go through, and if the board is okay with me responding, I can respond to some of the questions, but that would be, just I want to make sure that the board understands that would be a break of persons to be heard protocol. It'd be a variation of that, because usually for persons to be heard, it's just the public getting an opportunity to provide testimony. There's no obligation to the board unless you want to, to respond, but I leave that up to you, so.
That's something I can get to you later on.
Yeah, I think it's important because the public trust is that if you're going to allocate or approve a budget, and I know that things change during the year, that I was a school superintendent, things happen, and, but that seems like such a small amount of a $22 million budget that it should be one of the first things distributed because the activities go throughout the year, so I don't know, whoever you give that answer to is fine, but you know, I think that if you're going to allocate that fund in a budget, then that ought to be distributed. Thank you.
Just to get, if I can kind of top it really fast while the next person comes in, I wrote down that question. If there's other questions, I can write them down, and if the board would like, I can address some of those later on, you know, during the FY24 budget revision conversation.
Hello, I'm Erica Knox, and I'm a parent, graduate parent of many exchange students and a parent of a current Sika High, Sika High student, and I'm also a fundraiser, co-coordinator for lots of fundraising for activities. And I come out of concern for the funding being, not being allocated, but being deposited, so all of this, I probably can speak for a bunch of people behind me, but all of this came up very quickly yesterday, and so I'm not exactly clear the, what exactly the problem is, but it sounds like the money has been allocated, it's being distributed from the city properly for the marijuana tax to the school, but the issue is it's not getting deposited or was not deposited on time for activities, school activities, and now we're a few days away from the fiscal year ending, and the school activities still don't have their money and are struggling to figure that out and then also to present for the 23-24 school year. So if that can be talked about, that would help, I think greatly, you know, myself, but also I know a bunch of people behind me to clarify what's going on, and then be able to clarify if indeed that money has been deposited, or when, or you know, where it is by the district office sooner rather than later, because we're, you know, sitting here, there's people that are taking time off for their lunch break. So not at the end of the meeting, not during the budget for next year, but maybe address it as soon as possible so that everybody is clear and understanding of what exactly is happening. Thank you for your time, you guys, very much.
Freddie Charbonneau. Freddie Charbonneau, I am a member of the community, also a teacher, but also a mom. And I do want to say that we all know that you guys understand how important activities are. We know that you, that you value them as much as we do. They are so important to our students. I've addressed the board before about how important those coaches are to my own children and what a difference they have made in my children's lives. We, we came here as a choice for our son, Felix Myers, and it was the most serendipitous thing that we've ever done. It was an incredible change for him that has allowed him to be the best person he could possibly be, and part of that reason is because of those coaches and the teachers at Sika High School who take the time and really pour everything into our kids. And I'm just worried about if there is a shortfall, what does that mean for those activities in terms of making sure that those coaches are spending that time with our students, continuing to just, to help them and support them and teach them and just give them everything that they need, because they really do. And we've told Francis that he has a choice, our son, he's going to be a sophomore this year, he has a choice, we can go after sophomore year because Felix will graduate, we can go somewhere else and he can go do the IP, he can get a certificate in the International Black Glory. He wants to stay. He wants to stay because of those extracurricular activities. He wants to stay because he has found a place, he has, he has coaches who he like wants to make proud, who has, who have an amazing relationship with them. So I'm just worried about what are we going to put on those coaches' plate? They already do so much, the community already does so much for us, and I'm just worried about that shortfall and what we're going to be asking those coaches to do when they've just put so much of themselves into my own children and to all of my students who do activities. I just, I see the difference in my students every day when they are being coached, when they're being part of a team, when they're learning the time management skill, when they're learning all of that, like we see the passion as teachers that they bring, and it's because of those coaches. So I just want to, you know, support them. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for taking the time. My name is Anne Wyland. I'm a student and I'm involved in many activities in the Sika School District and Sika High School in general, and I realize how hard it is to fundraise within the community, like a previous community member brought up. It is very hard to keep trying to fundraise from the same people over and over and over again. It's like trying to dry, like squeeze a sponge and try and get as much water out of it as possible, so like what happens when, you know, when people aren't able to keep supporting us? And so having, having a substantial amount of money to have not necessarily free range with, but having the opportunity to use that money and support our whole school system is really, really important and just like, yeah, that's all.
Christian Litten. I'm the coach of the Sika High School Drum and Deck Forensics Team. I've been doing it for about seven years. When I was first asked about being a coach, I thought for sure I was not allowed to be one, I didn't think I had any qualifications, and so I had to learn a lot about what it was to be a coach, and the first thing that I was told when I came in was like, your budget's going to be about $28,000, but don't worry, we're going to give you $6,000. And to me, that was like insane. I was like, where do I get the other $22,000? I've never had that much money in my life, and was told, don't worry, you can fundraise, and that I was going to charge fees. And so over the last seven years, here I am, charging parents' fees for every trip that I take kids on and trying to reduce those fees to keep it reasonable. I do an activity that has no equipment, that has, doesn't really have uniforms, and I still need to raise that money because plane tickets have done nothing but go up. There's no ferry system like there was when I was a kid on this team, which was cheaper and made it more affordable to travel. You missed way more school. But all that I've seen over the last like three years is that money, that $6,000, hasn't changed in the amount, and it's like it would slowly get there later and later. And this year, I was like, okay, this seems to be a following trend of what's happened the last couple of years, where the money is coming later and later, and all of a sudden here, I'm finding out yesterday that the money has not shown up, and I'm sitting in a deficit with my account at the high school. So I'm going into my next year in the red, going like, okay, now I have to raise money at the very beginning of the year, and what, maybe charge parents more fees, ask community members for more money, and I know this is, I don't know whose responsibility, I don't even really know what's going on. I don't know where this money is or what's going on, but it's really putting a burden on me as a community member. I'm also a business owner. I get hit up by all the other activities as well that donate to activities, and we try our best, but man, it is not easy to donate to every activity. And so just as a community member, as a coach, as a business owner, like I'm just a little distraught and distressed by finding out, you know, very suddenly that I don't have some of the money, the very little bit of money that was, you know, promised to me as a coach that would help, you know, finally that's not there is hurtful and distressing, makes just that much tougher to do what we do as coaches.
Hi, I'm Theo Erickson. I'm going to senior year at Sika High School, and I'd like to say, activities are very important to everybody because during COVID, it's hard, like my mom wanted me to stay at home the entire time because she was worried about me during COVID, and it was really nice to go out and meet people at these activities. So it was really beneficial for my mental health, and I'm sure everybody else is, and also mental health is a problem here in Alaska, so all these activities really help people connect with others. So yeah, that's what I'd like to say. So yeah, that's what I'd like to say.
Hi there, I'm Tulsi Klaub. I have two kids in the high school. I am just coming here in support of obviously our athletic program and the current deficit that I'm kind of just hearing about. Like everyone has kind of reiterated, it is not easy with multiple kids in all the sports, especially living on an island where we are. My biggest concern is since we don't have this funding for last year, what is that reperession to us as parents for next year going in? I'm looking at 350 to 450 per student, per activity for my my fees for my kids. Okay, multiply that by a couple of kids, several different athletic programs. That adds up, not on top of their per diem, all their shoes, all their athletic gear, everything else that we're putting into these kids to make this, you know, and this is very important, the social emotional impact of activities for my kids, especially because school is not the best part of their day. That is a struggle. Activities, that is huge for them. That boosts their confidence. And so we do everything we can as parents and as a community to make this happen. But what is that implication going to be from last year not having that money? Like, what are my fees going to be? Is it going to be $1,000 for activity? Like, this is going to become like an elite program where now the kids with parents that don't have enough money, 350 is a stretch, 450 is a big stretch for a lot of people to put their kids in activities. So what is this going to, what's the impact for next year for us? If we have a deficit already, what, I mean, a lot of parents really want to know. How is this going to impact us? And I'm sorry, where is the money? I want to know. Where is the money? If it was promised, why isn't it in our activities account? I mean, how are we even doing activities? I know how much it costs for these trips to go on for my kids. How are they even doing this? Who's supporting these trips that they already did all year this last year? So biggest question, if you guys can clarify, I don't know if you even know what the activities fees are going to look like next year, but I'm pretty sure that there's going to be a substantial increase. But also, is there going to be a scholarship program now because there's a lot of kids that are not going to be able to participate? All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kevin Lee. I went to the schools. I wasn't here necessarily for the activities, but since the questions have been posed about where's the money, when and hopefully, or when you find that information out, can you at least tell us where a member or a person can go and find the answer?
Any more persons for your head?
There are some people online.
Give somebody a line.
Hi, I'm Mindy Berry, the new KGH principal. And I first wanted to say thank you for your hard work and dedication to students, staff, families of Sika School District. I don't envy the hard decisions that you have to make and truly appreciate your consideration for all of the possible solutions to our budgetary needs. I wanted to speak today in regards to the full-time position at KGH that is listed on the Budget Provision 1.1. And essentially, that's our open reading interventionist position. And I've spoken before to the board about the newly adopted Alaska Reads Act and the new requirements that come with this act and the strain that it will be putting on our schools just at the beginning, especially at the kindergarten through third grade level, which with using only the resources we currently have. So just a little history, we've already lost a reading interventionist at both Faironoff and Keet in past budget seasons. And and so that was currently, we have one reading interventionist at Keet serving four grade levels and one at Faironoff with two grade levels. This year at Keet, we also, the Learning Support Coordinator position is not being filled and which also provided halftime reading intervention as well as all the data management of our reading intervention programs in grades second through fifth. And so by removing the only remaining full-time reading interventionist position at Keet, it will have an extreme impact on our ability to provide the reading intervention services that we, you know, so desperately need and will be required to provide under the Alaska Reads Act. So I just would like to ask that you fully consider the impact of this cut at Keet and the impact it'll have on our struggling readers and our high need population of students. I also ask that you consider looking at the entire district to see if there's any other possible positions that can be shifted in order to not set cut such a critical position for our elementary students. I also ask if this cut is made that in the future, if there are any future funding comes available, that you immediately put it back in the budget for that full-time reading interventionist position to come back to Keet. It's a very essential position and just hope that that would be considered. So thanks, again, thank you for your time, and I appreciate your commitment to all of our Sika School District students and families.
I'm Emily Demmer, and I teach in the Sika School District. And my understanding is that the high school was promised activities money at the district office level, and maybe you guys didn't know about it, but it was not delivered and that that has never happened before. And so that's my concern. And I realized, another thing I want to say is that the marijuana money is not to replace what funding we already have. So that, you know, our principal talks a lot about, we have over half of our students in activities, which is great, but she talks about how can we get all of them in? But if we're not even getting our activities money, that's not going to happen. How can we expand our activities? Because we know that at the high school level and middle school level too, having students engaged is the best way to help them graduate and so forth. So I guess my question is just, that money was promised, and it's just like other people have said, it never got there. Where is it? Why did we not get it? Thank you.
Any other someone?
I don't see any other someone.
Anybody else to Peter? Thank you, everybody. Item 87. New business. So this. Can I have a motion to revise?
Iron Bay.
Iron Bay, 78.
I move to approve FY24 Budget Revision 1.1 as president.
Do you have a second on that?
I second. I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there a public comment on that? On budget revision?
Mike Vera, I hope that the board would take a moment to entertain the idea of amending this motion to include some funds for activities for back pay for FY23 as you approve the FY24 revision. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Tim Pike. Thank you very much for willing, being willing to be on the school board. I understand how challenging that can be. I have a couple of questions in terms of timing on this particular thing. And it sounds to me like we're setting ourselves up into a near near impossible circumstance where we're going to be pitting school activities against teaching staff. And I think in looking at this revision, I'm questioning whether or not maybe it would be a good idea to postpone this until you guys have a little clearer fiscal picture after the end of the fiscal year, for example. And so I guess that's my suggestion, is to give yourselves a little more time to to find out exactly how much money you have so that you can make some a better decision about where you need to go from here as opposed to funding yourself on this cleft stick that's going to, you know, going to make it very difficult going forward. Certainly, reading intervention with the Alaska Reads Act is going to be a tough thing for the district to absorb a loss in that category because actually, in looking at the Alaska Reads Act, there's a lot that the district's going to be required to do, and not having that position is going to be a big thing. Having said that, certainly need to make the activities whole. So I question whether or not you actually are at the point where you're ready to make that decision or whether that delaying a little bit and coming back on this again with a little more information might not be a better idea.
I also want to ditto what he just said. I agree. And I do have some questions. I'm just looking on my tiny little phone for the proposed budget revision for 2024. And it looks like school activities for 2023 was supposed to be around 308,000. And it's proposed, its first proposal for 2024 was 285, and then a revision went up to 288. I think I'm reading that right. So if you, this is very confusing, but if we can delay or if you can delay your decision so that there could be more information about lots of, all of all the money and where it stands, but why is it $20,000 less than even this year? And, you know, even if they didn't get the money deposited this year, like, why would it even decrease? So it looks like school activities money was not received. And if it was received, it was 308 for this year. And then the proposal for next year would be $20,000 less. So that's, I guess, that's my opinion. Just want to really encourage that delay. Yeah, thanks.
Is there any board comment?
When can we ask for clarification on some of these points at this point? Or?
For board comment?
Is it in board comment or will we just talk after?
You can, you can.
Yes. I have a, just a clarification here for a question, rather, for, for Sir Grevin Hazard. If if the board were to add, say, $200,000 to the activities budget, how how would that affect the current budget? And are there any other avenues to do this maybe within a timeline, within, within, within the, within the amount of time that we have?
Yeah, I I can speak to that a little bit. Thanks for the question. So a couple pieces as far as timeline, let's talk timeline. Before the board right now, this action item, this agenda item is to approve the FY24 Budget Revision. I'll talk about this maybe a little bit more later on. But as far as the timeline to address your question, the budget for FY24 has to be revised as a result of the veto that happened when the governor vetoed the legislative funding that was for $680 equivalent one-time DSA funding and essentially cut that 50%. So based on that veto and the impact to the state funding for public education, that was a loss to the district of about, you know, we, the district, the board had approved a budget back in April. It was built around a anticipated $450. That reduction bring brought that down to $340, which was a loss of $110, which equated about $287,000 to the district. So in looking at that loss that was generated by that veto by the governor, the budget that was approved in April actually is the revised budget that you have. It's more of just kind of informational. It's budget revision number one that you have. And if you look at budget revision one that you have in front, that kind of trues everything up, including the money from, you know, the state that was approved. And what that shows is that with keeping everything as is, based on that originally approved budget with the new numbers from the states and that loss of $287,000, the district's budget for FY24 is in the hole, it's in the negative at the end of next year, $53,000. And so the reason why this budget revision is coming to the board today is because the, it's a responsibility of the board to have a balanced budget to the state by July 14. It's actually the 15th, but the 15th falls on a Saturday. And so the board has to have an approved budget for the state by July 14 since it's the 15th is on Saturday. And so the reason from a timeline perspective, if the board was interested in extending, they wouldn't be able to extend until August, September because the deadline for, really, the business office upload all that they need to to the state for that timeline is July 14, which means they'll probably need at least three, four days beforehand to start inputting all that information and making sure that it gets submitted to the state by the deadline, which is July 14. Right now, if the board approves Budget Revision 1.1, which they're considering right now, that leaves, that is a balanced budget. That balanced budget does have a reduction of 1 FTE at Kikushin. I think it's important to point out that that FTE, my recommendation to the principal and to the board, it's it's not a recommendation to cut the reading interventionist. It's a recommendation, and it's inbuilt in the budget to have a 1.0 reduction. And so that could be one of the items that was being discussed back in April when the board was considering FY24 budget. The one area that the board was looking at was potentially a PTR, people teacher ratio increase for grades three, four, and five at Kikushin, which would have potentially had a reduction of a staff member and an increase to some class sizes, but yet would have, you know, addressed some of the budget concerns at the time. So for that 1.0 that is reduced from Kikushin, it's not necessarily the reading interventionist. interventionist. It's 1.0. There's other ways, and I would leave that up to, uh, the building principal to find the best way to, um, you know, address that, and that would be my recommendation to the board. If the board, so choose, do our this, uh, discussion, deliberation on the revision to FY24 budget to increase, um, some funding to student activities, right now, the balanced budget, and if you look at the budget, we'll kind of talk a little bit more. So we're kind of jumping a little bit out of sequence, but I think it's okay as far as the questions to get those addressed. At the end of, um, the FY24, that will leave a fund balance. If budget revision 1.1 is approved, it will leave a fund balance of thirty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. That is based on this revision, which means that if the board were to consider putting anything over thirty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars, it would be a negative budget. That budget would not be able to be submitted to the state. And so at this point, that is the money that is available. If the board chose to do more than that, um, they would have to, uh, look at areas for additional reductions, um, whether that's staff. There are positions that are currently open right now. It's important to point out that anytime we talk about making reductions, we have issued contracts for our tenured and our non-tenured staff, and so we have obligations to those employees, and at this time, we can't go through and say we are going to, you know, sorry, you know, we're real excited to have you here, but we're, you know, pulling back the contract. We've already issued, uh, intent letters and contracts. And so at this point, the only avenue to, um, really look at cost savings is, I think, first to look at the open positions that the district currently has, um, because there's no contract obligations in those positions. And so it would require the board, if they so wanted to look at increasing whether they wanted to put money back for the FTE that's been reduced at Kikushin, or if they wanted to put money for student activities, that money would have to come somewhere so we can end up with a balanced budget. And that could be that, um, you know, the reading interventionist at Kikushin was one of those positions that wasn't filled, and so there was a hole, and that was removed from the budget to help balance it for, uh, budget revision 1.1. Um, there are other positions that are available. Right now, uh, we are still advertising for a pool coordinator. Um, there is a, it was a senior arts position open at Pacific High School. Um, there's also, um, you know, a maintenance tech position, and those are some of the open positions that are, um, that are right now. Uh, just from a historic perspective, if the board remembers, uh, about two years ago, a maintenance employee was removed from the budget, and within three months, it was made very apparent that that needed to be put back because of the facility needs around maintenance around the district. And so, um, that would only, um, that would not give the, you know, the district probably the amount that, depending on what the, the board wanted to put back to, um, student activities or, um, you know, to, towards, uh, funding a teacher, that position would not probably have enough associated to a two-balanced budget. There would need to be additional cuts, especially if the board is looking at a hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred thousand, um, just for, you know, kind of that reference as a reminder, uh, a teaching salary when we do, uh, you know, kind of costing, you look at a teacher's salary at about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So if you're looking at, uh, two hundred thousand dollars, you're looking at, if you have that thirty-five thousand dollars in there, you're looking at needing to find about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the budget. Does that answer your question?
Can I ask a quick related question?
Yeah. Are you sure? Right? It's up to?
Yeah. All right. Um, I just wanna clarify. My understanding is that FY23, the budget will be closed out before, uh, or FY24 budget is due to the state. So even if we wanted to postpone this, you know, let's say until July tenth or something of that nature, we still wouldn't have those final figures for FY23. Is that correct?
That is correct, and, and if you want more detail on kind of like average timeline to close everything out, we can have, uh, the business manager come up and speak to that if you want some specifics, but yeah, most likely, we probably won't have everything closed out until the, towards the, uh, middle of July and maybe even into early August, but most likely, uh, into July.
All right, thank you.
So Frank, version, revision 1.1?
Yes.
With that, with the, um, and it's not a reduction of that one FTE, it's a, what would you call it? Just, um, not satisfying it until August?
Well, yeah, so essentially to help balance the budget, to take into consideration that loss of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Um, and, and I will, I, I will, if, 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 if you would like, I can try to speak to, um, some of the costs and maybe answer a couple of the other questions that came up earlier. Um, but if it's okay, I'd like to kind of, it, it was a reduction and, or essentially that position, that open position was removed. So it was a reduction of 1.0 FTE from Kikushin, which saved the district about a hundred and ten thousand dollars, which, um, you know, helped us balance that budget and that loss of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars.
And it's quite possible there's gonna be revenue coming in at the beginning of the, of the year to bring that position back. So it's...
So I, I wouldn't necessarily say revenue. How I would phrase it is, we know what the revenue's gonna be right now. This budget is reflective of that revenue that's, that's coming in, and that is, if you look at, um, and I'll kind of jump to the board map out just to kind of highlight a couple of pieces, and I kind of talked about why this revision was needed. Um, we did have that loss of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, a little over that. And that is, when you look at the revenue, that's the only change that is listed in that memo under the revenue, and that's that other state revenue, which is that DSA equivalent one-time funding. That was essentially a shift from four hundred and fifty dollars, which the board built FY24 budget around, that anticipated four hundred and fifty dollars. And when it came out, three hundred and forty thousand, that was a reduction of a hundred and ten thousand per student, if you will, not one-time equivalent, which equated that two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And so that's the revenue. Now, what, uh, as you look further in the budget, we're gonna kind of skip forward a little bit. Um, as we continue to go through and close out grants and items from FY23, this is why it takes time. We still have bills coming in. Um, it won't happen until the, like you said, towards that end of July timeframe. If you look at the, towards the end of the budget, when it talks about the FY23 fund balance. So to go to your point, it's really not additional revenues. What it is, is, um, money that's, uh, you know, as we close out accounts, it's savings that we have that get automatically put into the fund balance, and that fund balance will carry over into FY24. And if you look on that memo already as from when we did the revision, um, and was approved last Tuesday at the board meeting, um, through closing out, the board, uh, the business office has already identified a couple of areas, uh, that we were able to, um, you know, fund through grants that right now is looking at, you know, a, uh, additional savings of around a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars to the FY24 fund balance. And so that money is anticipated. Once we finish closing everything out, that money's anticipated to come back into the fund balance. You know, it's just, we, as we continue to work through and close out, more of this will, you know, will, I have a better understanding of what funding has been used and, you know, what funding, you know, we're able to put towards grants, and then that will be some, some observed savings moving forward into FY24. And so, for example, to kind of ask that, to answer the question, we are anticipating, and that's why it's in this memo, that there will be at least right now about a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars coming back, um, for the FY24, um, fund balance, but we don't have that closed out yet, and we don't have that guaranteed amount, which is why at this point we're building the, the FY24 budget revision that's in front of you is reflective of the numbers that we know that we had based on the budget revision for FY23 that happened last week. And so we're anticipating that at this point, we are gonna have at least a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars coming back, but it's, it's not reflective yet because we haven't closed out, um, FY23. And so we are in this tough situation. We have a little bit of a time crunch with July, come July fourteenth needing to submit the budget, but not knowing what that fund balance leftover is going to be. And so we have to be able to put forward a fund, uh, a balanced budget based on the information we have. That's the information that we have right now, and the funding that we have available, and what has been allocated, and we know will move forward into the fund balance for FY24.
So can, Frank, can you clarify, um, back to some of the activities things?
Yes.
So there was a question, one about was there a specific allocation, um, in the budget? And I, I know I looked at it. I don't have the numbers in front of me for last year, but there was about two hundred thousand originally allocated, and then in revised budgets, that was brought up to like two forty. Um, so, and so talk about the one thirty-two that some people brought up. Um, and, and then if you could also talk about the Prop 1, and if we've seen that funding, or when we will expect to see that funding?
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you for the question. Uh, I've got, I wrote down some questions, so I'll try to go through and address some of those questions and hopefully, um, you know, address that. So historically, and this was brought up, historically, the assembly has appropriated an additional, what we consider outside the cap, um, so funding that doesn't go towards instruction, but is, goes into a special revenue fund that is specifically to be used for an identified area. In this case, historically, a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars has gone towards student activities. For FY23, when the budget was being built in FY23, the assembly did not appropriate money towards student activities. So that a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, which historically has been provided by the assembly, and I would like to point out, that is and has been appropriated for FY24 moving forward. So the assembly did appropriate a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars for student activities in, in for the FY24, uh, school year. Those special appropriations, if you will, it's important to kind of point out, are not reflected in the budget revision that you see in front of you or in the district's, um, general operating budget. They fall outside. They're, uh, a special revenue fund. The assembly says, we're putting this money uh, towards the activities, in this case, a hundred and thirty-two thousand. That money has to be used for student activities, a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And so that historically is what was provided for FY24 moving, you know, hopefully moving forward. That will continue to be, uh, provided. But for FY23, the assembly did not appropriate a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And so the first question that came up from the gentleman that asked, was a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars appropriated or allocated? The assembly did not have or approve a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars was not appropriated to student activities, um, because the assembly did not pass money specifically for that. The assembly passed money that was essentially secure rural schools. They did say that in the, that the assembly has done also, uh, secure rural schools funding comes in towards the end of the school year. Um, they did, uh, at the time, I, back in, I wanna say February was when they, early February at the assembly meeting when they approved the budget, they did make a motion to authorize a hundred percent of secure rural schools funding up to five hundred thousand dollars goes towards the district, that they would give that to the district. There was no, no obligation on that part of where that money would go to. It was, that was what was approved, the secure rural schools, because you don't find out, you know, the city doesn't know what they're going to receive from the secure rural schools until later in the year. We got the email from the, uh, city, uh, on May eleventh indicating that secure rural schools funding came in at about five hundred thousand dollars, and that five hundred thousand dollars would be given to the district. And so that money was distributed to the district, and that money went into the general fund. And that happened, uh, towards the middle to the end of May. I don't have the exact date of when that money was deposited by the city, but we were notified on May eleventh of this year. So just, uh, last May eleventh is when we got the email. And so the question came up, why wasn't that money put in at the beginning of the year? The money wasn't deposited at the beginning of the year because we didn't have that money. There was no money. We weren't sure, I mean, there have been years where there was no secure rural schools funding. The last couple of years, it has been over what we projected, but there are some years when there is no secure rural schools funding that comes through. And so no money was deposited into accounts because we weren't sure what that funding would be for secure rural schools. And so that is another piece that I just wanted to make sure, um, that was put in there, uh, to address some of that, um, you know, some of that information. To speak specifically to funding for student activities, I, I would like to point out, I'll, I'll just talk about some, you know, numbers that we have here. For FY24, back in April, when the school board at the time approved the FY23 budget, I apologize if I said 24, but the FY23 budget back in April of 2022, the original budget had in the budget for student activities, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. That was what was approved for student activities for FY23, and that was, um, actually a little bit more, 'cause it, it, there's middle school as well, but the bulk of the money for, it was approved under Sika High School's funding. It was for two hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. I want to point out that when the, the board approved budget revision three point, um, sorry, uh, budget revision, uh, number three last week for FY23, the amount that the board approved for that budget revision for high school activities at Sika High School was two hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five. It was an increase of forty thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars from the general fund that went towards high school student activities. So when, there's comments out there stating that the district cuts student activities funding, that's, that's, that's not true. The budget revision actually put an additional forty thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars from the general fund into student activities for FY23 to cover the increased costs, um, that were associated, um, you know, with running student activities from the general fund. When you look at this budget revision right now, there's a question came up also about a reduction in the amount of funding to student activities. For FY24 budget revision 1.1, which is what's being considered right now, the high school, Sika High School has for student activities, two hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars in that budget. If you compare that to the original budget that was approved in FY23, which was two hundred and twenty-four thousand, it's an increase of twenty thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars obligation from the general fund going towards student activities at the high school level. And so there's actually been an increase from what was approved back in, uh, April for the FY23 budget. There's been an increase of twenty thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars to what is being considered before the board today for revision 1.1 for student activities funding from the general fund. In addition, like you said, Mr. Gavler, earlier, in addition, outside of that, two hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars at the high school level. There's also about twenty-five thousand dollars at the middle school for student activities. In addition to that funding, and while it's not reflected in this budget document as before, before the board, in addition to that funding that is in the general fund, the assembly has appropriated, which will go specifically toward student activities, one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, as well as what was voted on by the, um, community of Sipu, that three hundred thousand, up to three hundred thousand dollars, that is part of Proposition 1, that money will also go towards student activities and associated travel. And so that two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars that's from the general fund, plus a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, plus three hundred thousand dollars, will be what the, um, student activities will have for FY24. I don't know right now when the, um, usually the hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars that's appropriated comes pretty early on, and we're able to deposit that into the student activities accounts, uh, give it to the high school to distribute, uh, to all the sports. We don't know yet when that three hundred thousand dollars is gonna be distributed, if it's gonna be one lump sum that comes in January after the year is over. We don't know if it's gonna come in quarterly installments. Um, we just, I don't, we're, I'm not sure if we have a specific as to when that money is going to be deposited, but there is that commitment of up to three hundred thousand dollars based on the sales tax of, um, marijuana, uh, that was voted on by, um, Proposition 1. And so that money is, is allocated, that money is appropriated, and that money is part of, um, you know, the, the, well, the two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars for high school activities is part of that. And to go to what someone in, uh, Mojer said too, I think that this budget also reflects, and I think is very important, because we really wanted to make sure that that trust and transparency was there when we had those conversations, and when the assembly was talking about that Proposition 1 money, that money, I mean, we all agree, the intent of that money is to supplement, not to supplant, but to supplement our student activities. and provide those opportunities to make sure we get to that 100% participation rate for students' activity, our participating activities. And so this budget that is before you does that. That $300,000 plus $132,000 supplements that $244,718 that is in the budget right now. So that is money that will go towards that. And so those were, I think, a lot of the questions that came up. That's kind of a general overview of that money that in some historical context around, you know, kind of where we stand as with this budget and also, you know, kind of a little bit to answer those questions that were posed. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions or if there's any follow-up from the board.
I do have one more follow-up. So for fiscal year '23, is the like activities fund like in the red? Like is there a negative balance on that fund in the school district at the end of fiscal year '23 that they don't have money to pay whatever bills might have been?
All of the, all of the coaches, everyone who was funded as far as moving forward, there is still funding in the high school's student activities account. We, we have to go through, there's still, you know, we're at the end of the year. Sports went into, I mean, we just, we lost a baseball and so we're still trying to close out some of our accounts. We do know there's a couple of accounts that are in the red, but those are covered by the, you know, those can be covered by the Sika High School activities account. They do have funding in the Sika High School activities account as well. I think there's a couple that might have, you know, gone into the, dipped into the red, but we're not looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars. It, it, you know, the most sports and activities received about $6,000, as you heard in the testimony, received about $6,000 a year that came from that funding that was provided historically from the Assembly, the $132,000. So, but there were no bills that we didn't pay, you know, and so if the board was interested in, like I said, in the future, potentially allocating some money back towards student activities, when they look at the other factors that are in play, whether it's staffing, whether it's, you know, additional funding towards student activities, they can look at, and you know, CEO gave what, what, what sports did go into the red and, you know, we can, you know, provide some of that, you know, funding towards them. But at this point, all of the bills are being paid and like you said, the district, through the general fund, actually spent $40,000 extra dollars. The board approved that budget revision last year, an additional $40,000 towards student activities to make sure that they weren't in the red at the end of the school year.
One more, did, have we gotten any of the Prop 1 money yet? That's only coming for the next year, right, fiscal year '24?
That is correct. We have not received Prop 1 money and like you said, we're not sure exactly if that's going to be coming quarterly or if it's going to be coming in January or at the end of the school year. We just don't know when that commitment's going to be made. I mean, this is the first year we are working through it. They are just collecting the taxes now and so we don't know what that's going to look like moving forward. And that's something that we can ask and, you know, potentially provide some more information to the board on the timeline for that Prop 1 money coming to the district. We could ask the city about that, see if we can get some details. Just as, as you asked that question, I, I just want to reiterate because it's important to point this out, that, you know, for next year FY '24, that $132,000 plus that Prop 1 money is committed by the Assembly. So that money will be coming. So, and it will go towards student activities and student activities and associated travel. Just a reminder for FY '23, the Assembly did not appropriate what historically they have, that $132,000 towards student activities. There was no money that was, like I said, the $132,000 direct appropriations. They did not appropriate that for FY '23. Oh, there was one other piece I want to point out in talking about that Prop 1 money. There is a committee that's formed that will, you know, talk about the use of and it goes towards the transparency piece. You know, we, we really, you know, we have meetings on it. I had meetings on it earlier in the year about, you know, how we're going to use that money. And so we really want to be transparent with how that money's being used. You know, we want to be good stewards of the resources that the city and the community of Sika provide towards the school district. We value those partnerships and that commitment. And so there is a committee that's put together that will look at what the needs are around student activities, that will make recommendations about how to provide and where that, you know, $300,000 for student activities, whether it's scholarships, whether it's to impact, you know, the cost for families to participate in sports, which to answer the other question that came up, there, there's no anticipated increase to any activities or participation fees for parents for next year. In fact, one of the things that was talked about is a way to hopefully provide some relief to families in using that Prop 1 money for participating in activities. Any other questions?
Frank?
Yes?
Hi, this is Melanie. I guess you probably already said this, but if you can just say it again for my benefit, is there a need to revise FY '23 to add more money to student activities?
At this time, I don't think that there's a need to revise FY '23 to add student activities. I think if the board would like to add funding to student activities once FY '23 closes out and if there's additional money, that would be a time when I would recommend the board look at that. If the board goes through and revises FY '23 right now and adds money to student activities, that will have a direct impact on the budget that you're looking at right now for FY '24 that's up for consideration. And you will have to look for additional savings. If you add money to FY '23, it will have an impact to the fund balance that is carried over for FY '24 that this budget's built around. And, you know, we'll have an issue with balancing that budget and essentially, you can't pass FY '24 today if the board's going to go back and then you change it to FY '23 because FY '24 is built around what was that last revision to FY '23, truing everything out to the best of our information on last Tuesday, at last Tuesday's board. The board can still, moving forward, and I think you heard that in testimony, and we talked about it last week as well, when we were looking at finding that balance, that if the board would like to add some funding towards student activities, that is a discussion that can come up once the board has a better understanding of, you know, what is available after the, you know, FY '23 is closed out and we have a better understanding of what funding is, is going to be carrying over in, in the fund balance to FY '24. There's also, and because public testimony came through today about that as well from Ms. Berry, Principal Berry, there's other considerations too that the board is going to have to weigh in looking at the funding that's available once everything closes out and, you know, how they want to allocate that funding in potential future budget revisions or outing staff or putting money towards student activities or a combination of both.
Mr. Chair, may I speak?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay. Just to add to your confusion, which I'm known to do as superintendent, but I would like to say that the budget that you're passing today is a placeholder because we don't know what the budget's actually going to be until we get through October and know what the count is and that type of thing. I mean, so we, what I would recommend is for you to approve the budget that's been presented. And then we can have a discussion in late July, early August about all the concerns that are being expressed here. But until we know what we have left, because my, here's my fear coming up there for one year, folks, is, is the fact that you got $340 on to the budget, but it's not on the BSA. So that 340 could actually go away next year. And so what I'm, what I'm going to have to spend a good portion of the time on in talking with the board and with this staff is, okay, we, we are going to have to come cut somewhere to get FY '25's budget settled. And when I say cut, I'm, I'm talking the only place, and I don't know what the percentage is in, in, in the budget for personnel, but I'm guessing that it's somewhere in between 80 and 95% of your budget is tied up in personnel. I could be wrong around that, but I don't think I am. And so really, the only place that you have to cut will be personnel. And so we're going to have to take a hard look at it because if you've spent, my understanding is you've spent the reserve down to $10,000, which just scares the bejibis out of me, but we'll make it through the year. But what, what we can't do is build the 25, the FY '25 budget based upon the money we're not sure we're going to get because you won't have any reserve left to cover it. Now, I think we can get through next year from what I've heard Frank say. And I've been in Frank's position many times when you're talking about budgets and hurting, but you've got teacher negotiations, you've got $340 that's not on the BSA. And so you can't really count on that and put that into positions because it's one-time money as far as we know. And we don't know what the legislature's going to do next year. So if you were to pass the budget this year, and again, it's just a placeholder. And then we can take a look at what it is that everybody's concerned about. We can take it, we can have an open work session. We can answer everybody's questions as truthfully and as honestly as, as we can and, and try to come up with what it is that the community and the district and the board want to do with their resources. Because as, from my perspective, next year's budget, when you do have negotiations and you do have one-time money, we're, we're going to have to spend a good portion of the year talking about where the cuts can be because I don't see the governor stepping up to the plate anytime soon to, to help us out. And so I, I recommend it's pass the budget that's presented. Let me get up there, let me take a look at it. Not that I know any more than Frank does, than Leslie does, but I have handled budgets in the state of Alaska for 13 years, I think, as a superintendent. So I, I, I do know my way around the budget. So give us the time to, give Leslie the time to finish out FY '23 so we know what kind of reserve we have. Then we might be able to solve some of those issues, you know, the reading specialist, that type of thing, any funding that we can put towards the activities, you know, we, we can take a look at that. But right now, we've got to get that placeholder in place because the state requires it. Get it in place, we move on until we have, wrap up the FY '23, then we can revise that FY '24 budget again. Thank, thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir.
Todd, if there are any other questions, I have a couple comments. It's kind of where I'm at.
Can we do that after a public comment? First item, please.
What time, say it again?
After a public comment, please.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Public comment?
I want to just address, I think that some of the things that Mr. Hauser have covered are a part of the story, not the full picture of the story. He's done a really good job of rewriting the budget book and it's very clear to see where things go now. And as a result of that, there's a new category, that's high school student activities. And that's never existed as its own category before. That $264,000-ish dollars that sits in there is not money that has never existed before. It has always come from general fund. That covers the salary and benefits for the activities director and it covers the salaries for the coaching segments. And that's always been the district's investment in activities. That comes from their general fund, it always has been. It's never come from the city as a pass-through, it's always been there, it's not nailed. It's not a contribution to activities, it's just the same thing they've always done. I was in the room in February when the school board met with the Assembly. There was a letter that the school board president sent to the Assembly that asked for 100% of liberal schools, up to $500,000. And in that, she included three things that the money would be spent on. One was pool operations, one was major maintenance, and the other was student activities. I listened to the 25-ish minutes of that meeting yesterday. And if you listen to the conversation, the conversation is about student activities. While it wasn't directly passed through and obligated to be spent on student activities, I think you can safely say the understanding of everyone in the room when that conversation happened was that a good chunk of that money would be spent on student activities. And it wasn't meant that it would pay the salary of the athletic director. It was meant that it would go and be deposited directly into teams' accounts. Teams' accounts saw zero money deposited into them this year. And it was part of the understanding with that assembly. I spoke with Mr. Knox, he was on that assembly. He understood it that way, Ms. Hemsip understood it that way. If you listen to the meeting, the intention was that that was going to be spent on student activity teams. So I think that's one part of the story. I don't think it was the full story. I think you guys should understand the full story as you make that decision. Thank you.
Hi, Maggie Wayne, mom of three kids in the district, teacher. I guess I would like to speak just kind of in general terms from what I'm hearing from my colleagues. I like the questions you're asking, I like the questions you're asking today. I would encourage you to keep asking questions, clarify what you're going to dig in. I know it's volunteer work, I appreciate you doing it. But I don't want to sit here and, I mean, there's obviously been some gross miscommunications along the lines for us to have a room full of honorable educators that are saying one thing and then there's misunderstanding between funds allocated, intention of funds allocated, when the money was going to be there, the money's not there. All of those things, I think those questions need to be answered. I think there has to be accountability so that we can build trust going forward with the administration. I think it's really important for morale, for the kids, for programming, for decision-making. As Mr. Rajah said, next year's probably not going to be any easier, it's probably going to be harder. That seems to be the trend, but keep asking questions, keep clarifying because we want to get to a place where we can trust. And when funds are supposed to be there, the funds are supposed to be there. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Christie Brady, I work in the school district, I have kids in the school district, I'm assistant coach, a couple of activities. I'm not entirely sure what I want to say. I sit there and I listen to everything that's going on and I, I, I don't have papers in front of me, I don't have budgets in front of me, I don't have, I mean, I probably could have looked up on my phone, but I'm just kind of taking notes as I go and trying to listen to where money's going and where it's been. And I, I hear Mr. Hauser say that money wasn't for fiscal year '23, was not allocated from the Assembly. But then I heard him say that $132,000 was put into budgets or was put into the accounts and I don't understand. I don't understand where the miscommunication is at. So I echo a few other sentiments that I don't understand where things are going. And transparency is important. And to have you pass the budget for FY '24, great, but I don't know that I have a whole lot of trust that what is being said, what is being discussed, what is being allocated, what is being deposited, is going to be deposited. There's not a whole lot of trust. And I, I don't envy you guys your job at all. I, I realize that's going to be a difficult task. But any, any kind of transparency that we can get as far as where that money is going, why FY '23, I don't understand what happened with FY '23, I guess, is what I'm saying. And it would be nice if there's plenty of transparency so that we can figure out, so that I can trust going forward that, that it's going to be there. Part of my job as assistant coach is to, to help the head coaches and the biggest task that they have that they just hate is the fundraising portion and the, the dealing with the budget. And so I, I don't, I understand that dealing with money is, is yuck. But it, it needs to be done, it needs to be done transparently so that we can all understand. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Tristan, did you have something?
Said?
Public comment?
Yeah, I just kinda wanted to explain my thinking on where, you know, where I stand right now and where I'm gonna vote. So now's the appropriate time.
Yeah.
I was like, it is?
Come on.
All right, thank you. Sorry, I'm on the phone and it's sometimes hard to track it.
Absolutely, very hard.
All right, so I guess in my mind, and I think some of this is gonna, you know, echo the comments that Steve just made in terms of, you know, this budget, this FY '24 budget 1.1 before us really being a placeholder. And so what I see is, I see kind of action that needs to happen in the short term, the midterm, and the long term to address some of these issues. So in the short term, I do plan to vote yes for budget revision 1.1 for FY '24. And I'm doing that, you know, for the reasons we spoke about already, that Frank addressed, that Steve addressed, that we need to have a balanced budget into the state by July 15. And we're not gonna close out FY '23 before then. So this, you know, is the best guess, you know, best proxy budget, whatever you wanna call it, that we have as far as the information we have. You know, with that being said, we do anticipate that we're gonna have somewhere in the range of around $160,000-ish of our own balance while FY '23 is fully closed out. So what I'd like to see us do, and Steve mentioned this already, is once we have FY '23 closed out, we know what that fund balance is gonna be going into FY '24, meet as soon as possible, make those budget revisions, you know, prioritizing getting that position back in that key so it can be hired, it can move forward. You know, and that's basically the budget that we passed back in April. You know, that really speaks to kind of the short term going into the midterm. And I think the midterm, as Steve said, is we actually don't have our student count until October. So we'll do another budget revision once that comes in, once that's official, when we know what our actual revenues are gonna be. You know, so that kind of is how I'm approaching the short and the midterm here, is voting yes on this, getting it through as new information comes in. We have those, you know, work sessions, special meetings, and we get the budget trued up and figured out and ensure it's, you know, as good a budget as we can get, similar to what we passed in April. And then for me, I also just wanna speak a little bit for the long term. You know, this isn't anything new, it's some of the points that I've been talking about since I got on to the school board. You know, I think one thing that's important for us to do is to look at the full budget. The school board historically, for as long as I can remember, over 10 years, has really only looked at and approved the general fund budget. And so I think going into FY '25, I would like to see us at a minimum reviewing FY '25 budgets, you know, all of these budgets. So we're looking at student activities. And I think we should be approving those. We should be approving the full comprehensive budget just like the assembly does for the city. You know, the assembly approves the general fund, they approve all the enterprise funds, all the special revenue funds, and those budgets are there in the line item budget. And I'd like to see us move towards something similar in the school district so there is that level of transparency, you know, and you don't have to go -- the place where that information is found is in the annual audit. So you can go back to last year's audit and find information about the various, you know, special revenue funds, activity funds, all of that there. But it's after the fact, it's after the year has closed out. So I wanna see us, you know, both setting the budget and then reviewing that, you know, as far as the audit and when we close out the fiscal year to ensure we're on track with that original budget, general fund and all those special revenue funds. You know, and so that's one point. And those changes in an organization with the budget, the size, and the complexity of the districts with the capacity we had this previous few years, particularly without an assistant superintendent, you know, it takes time, those are processes that take, you know, years to transform. But I think that's something I'm definitely committed to and one of the priorities I have as a school board member. And I'd like to see us do that moving forward. So I'm looking forward to that, I'm looking forward to working with Steve, with the school board, with the community, all the stakeholders, teachers, administrators on that process. And kind of to wrap this up, you know, also in the long term, one of the things I'd like to do to be able to do that is, you know, and I think I'll probably bring this forward at our next meeting, is to reestablish that budget committee. You know, and so that we do have a group of, you know, a couple of school board members, ideally an assembly representative, you know, someone from tribal council or from the tribe, you know, representatives from SEA or other, you know, stakeholders there, a number of them. We'll put that out later, you know, in the proposal. But basically, reestablish that budget committee so there is a group looking at this and looking long term. Because Steve spoke to this and Frank has spoken to this and we as a school board have spoken to this. You know, we're in a budget crisis. And we were able to get by, we're able to get by just barely this year, I think. But we're pulling, you know, upwards of $2 million from our fund balance. We're zeroing out our fund balance. So on top of that one-time 340 BSA equivalent not being there next year, we're not gonna have a fund balance of $2 million. You know, so we're really looking at, you know, upwards of $2.5 million deficit already going into FY '25. You know, and that's the equivalent of 20 to, you know, 23 teaching positions. And that's the reality we're looking at. The school district and the school board does not have any way to raise revenues. We are fully dependent on the state and on the city. And so, you know, as Steve said, we need to have a conversation with the community, with the assembly, with all of these stakeholders to figure out how we wanna allocate the limited money we have. You know, and I'm gonna say it one more time, I feel like a broken record, but, you know, the last time that BSA was increased was back in 2016. And between now and then, inflation has been over 25%. You know, if you look at the 5,960 BSA, that's close, you know, that's over $1,500 that we're missing because of inflation. So there's just no way we can get around that. You know, we need the state to come through and inflation-proof the BSA and make it an actual BSA increase and not a one-time thing. And, you know, with that not happening, we need to look for other local options and we'll be working with the assembly to do that and, you know, looking forward to working with all of you, although it's a, you know, challenging situation, it's the situation we're in and we need to face it head-on. So I guess I'll wrap up there, get off my soapbox and allow some other people some other time.
I just wanna comment that I need to be excused in 10 minutes, so I would love it if you can bring us to a low key.
No comment?
That's my only comment.
No other comment?
Melanie, check it out.
Melanie, do you have anything to say, Melanie?
No, thank you.
Really quick for me. I do wanna just add a little bit about what Tristan was saying with the budget committee. It's something that I've also been thinking about. What I've heard with what everyone is saying, with persons to be heard, the teachers, family members, it's about trust and it's about transparency. It's about knowing what's going on. If you don't know what's going on, you tend to make your own decisions. You make, if you don't know what's going on with the budget, you tend to, well, you tend to make stuff up. So let's all understand what the budget's about. It's then having the committee, everyone's on the same page. And it's not just for the community, it's for us too. It's for the board, it's for everybody to get on the same page and understand the whole thing. So it's an incredible idea, don't know why we haven't done it before. We'll huddle heads, do it. It's a wonderful idea. Short on time, let's get to it.
Motion on table.
Motion on table. The motion on table is 1.1?
1.1.
Motion on table right now is to approve budget revision 1.1. Can I get a second?
We already have that, you just --
Already have a second?
Yes, we do. Call for a vote?
Oh, have a vote.
Todd Geller?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Snyder? Melanie Borden?
Yes.
Tristan Gavon?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Motion passed and approved. Budget revision 1.1 is approved.
I'm gonna ask to be excused. From the mean.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Todd, procedure wise?
Now, now you ask for a motion for the executive.
Okay, it's up to you. All right, so item A?
7B.
7B, sorry, thank you, Todd. So glad you're here.
Item 7B, executive session. The school board reserves the right to go into executive session as to an extended period as AS 44.62.310 and board bylaws 9321. An executive session may be called to consider the following subjects. Number one, matters that intimate knowledge of which would clearly have an adverse effect upon the finances of the district to the subjects that tend to prejudice the reputation and character of any person provided the persons may request a public discussion. Number two, matters by which law municipal character or organs are required to be confidential. And number four, matters involving consideration --
Consideration?
Consideration, sorry. Or government records that by law are not subject to public disclosure. Can I get a motion? To go into executive session? Please.
I move to go into executive session.
One second. It's gonna move into executive? Do you have a public comment?
Could you read the full, the full motion? I don't believe that Melanie or Tristan have the full motion in front of them.
The recommended motion to go into executive session.
Yes, that one.
I move to go into executive session in accordance with and under the provision of AS 44.62.310. C1, matters that immediate knowledge of which would clearly have an adverse effect upon the finances of the district. And number two, subjects that tend to prejudice the reputation and character of any person. The subjects to be discussed are district contracts and finances. Mr. Hauser is invited.
Public comment?
Public comment?
I was gonna speak because I hadn't heard what was in the motion. District contract is a very broad term. I don't know which contract with the district. Is it custodial, is it with administrator? Which contract is it? Just reading from the AASB, it said the motion should clearly describe the subject of the proposed executive session without defeating the purpose of addressing the subject in question. It seems like a little mysterious executive session, so I'm just wondering if there's anything more that can be shared with the public.
All I have is what you read. That's all I have.
Todd, I can add to that. You know, one of the topics will be the custodial contract.
Custodial contract. Thanks, Beth.
Tom?
Hi.
Oh, we need to go --
Hope to go into the --
To go to pass the motion. We need to pass the motion.
There's really fast, there's a hand raise in the -- I mean, I don't know if it was, I'm not sure if she wanted to speak up or a public comment, she still wanted to speak.
Do you see that?
Yes, definitely.
Down on the bottom?
Go ahead, Annette, if you have something really quick.
Yes, my, Ned Evans, I'm the Ventures Coordinator. I just want to know if the Ventures program in any way, shape, or form is going to be discussed in this executive session.
No.
Thank you.
Todd, do you want us to clear it in before we all leave?
Yes, we're voting on the motion right now and then everyone will have to leave.
Okay.
Motion on the table is to go into executive session. Todd Geller?
Yes.
Tristan Gavon?
Yes.
Melanie Borden?
May I help you?
Yes.
Danny Snyder is absent and excused, the motion passes.
I have to get out of here?
Executive session starts at 1:51 PM.